Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, April 27th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, again, good evening, everyone. A few opening remarks before we get started. This evening's meeting will be conducted a little differently than our usual council meeting. We're implementing the Governor's Executive Order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows the councilors to participate remotely, so the cable station will be switching views between the City Clerk and I, and then the TV screen that has the video feed of the councilors who will be talking during the meeting tonight. All councilors are present and will conduct a roll call shortly to confirm their attendance. Councilors have been asked to review the agenda items before the meeting and contact the mayor or indoor department heads to obtain answers to their questions prior to the meeting so that this meeting can be conducted efficiently. All votes will be via the roll call vote. And as you heard, the mayor is available, should he be needed to address any council questions. There are 24 items on the evening's agenda. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance. Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
And Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby is present.
Eleven yeas, sir. All right. Good evening. All councilors are present. I will now ask the City Clerk to read Agenda Item Number One. Minutes of the City Council Meeting, March 23rd, 2020.
Counselor Tenera here. We're going to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes from our March 23rd meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
And Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. It is unanimous. Agenda item number two. Now is the time for the continued public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Sections 5, 17, and 18 relative to contracted yards and the proposed rezoning of land located on Farm Road identified as Map 85, Parcel 12, Order Number 20-100, 7947A. All right. This public hearing will be continued with no testimony being heard. It will be continued till May 18th, 2020, at 8:00 p.m. Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until May 18th.
Mr. President, Counselor Roby, I move to continue the public hearing until May 18th at 8:00.
Motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing until Monday, May 18th, 2020, at 8:00. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
And Counselor Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to continue the public hearing until May 18th is approved with eleven in favor, none opposed. It is unanimous. It will be continued till May 18th. Agenda item number three. Now is the time for the continued public hearing on the application for an LED sign special permit from William Camuso on behalf of Lincoln 431 LLC, Shell Gas Station at 431 Lincoln Street, Order Number 20-100, 7948A. Again, this public hearing will be continued with no testimony being heard and will be continued until May 18th at 8:00. Entertain a motion to continue until May 18th at 8:00.
Mr. President, Counsel Roby, I move to continue the public hearing until May 18th at 8:00.
Motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing until May 18th at 8:00. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
And Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to continue the public hearing to May 18th at 8:00 is approved with eleven in favor and none opposed. It is continued to May 18th. Agenda item number four. Communication from the mayor regarding the FY 2021 budget recommendation in the amount of $173,983,364, which represents a 2.93% increase over last year's appropriation. And the proposed budget is available in the clerk's office and on the city website for viewing. If I could ask the City Clerk to read the mayor's letter on the fiscal year 21 budget, please.
Honorable President, Osing and councilors, I am submitting for your consideration my budget recommendation for fiscal year 2021. I am sending you this with the highest of precautions due to unknown local revenues and state aid. The state at this point is showing models with up to nearly a 4% shortfall for the current year and as high as 15% for fiscal year 21. Usually at this point, we would have seen the governor's budget and the House version to determine local aid. Governor Baker came out with this budget a couple of months ago that was very favorable to the city of Marlboro, but to date, the House has not figured out how to move forward with budget deliberations. It may be some time before we see an approved state budget. Many communities are holding off their budget process until we get answers to some of the unknowns. In working closely with the city's finance team, President Osing and Finance Chair Irish, we have a collaborative working relationship, and I know I can rely on your cooperation for changes moving forward. I am considering this as this a base and do not expect this to be a final product when we look back on fiscal 2021. Over the last few months, city department heads and I have worked together to develop a comprehensive budget that builds on the savings of the past several years and includes investments, ensuring a quality education for our children, cleaner and safer streets, and maintains government efficiency, all while keeping in mind the fiscal standing of our city and impact on the taxpayers. The fiscal year 21 budget totals $173,883,364, which represents a 2.93% increase over last year's total operating budget. The entire overall increase in this year's budget is for additional school funding. Health insurance. Health insurance continues to be a significant factor in our annual operating costs with a 4.2% increase in both the city and school line items. There have been increases in claims with our retirement population, which has caused increases across the board. This also is a driver for our increased OPEB liability. Dental premiums have experienced no increase as we are still within the three-year agreement. As always, we will continue to evaluate our health insurance costs, working with union leadership, and look for creative ways to contain costs and increase coverage. New Human Resources Director Lynn Daven is experienced and ready to assist in this capacity. Departmental changes and updates. Most of the salary increases within the fiscal year 21 budget are 2% cost of living adjustments effective July 1, 2020, due to contractual raises and step increases done through contract negotiations. In the Building Department, we will be eliminating the part-time local inspector slash code enforcement officer and a 19-hour-per-week part-time senior clerk. Additionally, we have contracted Four Leaf Inc. to assist the Building Department with extensive plan reviews and other inspectional services. I am proposing to change the job description and responsibility of our conservation agent to the title of Conservation Agent/Sustainability Officer. This will allow the position to assist the community in a wide variety of ways as we are entering several sustainability initiatives with conservation elements. This position needs to move through the ordinance process. Please note, I will be sending down a reorganization of the finance team. I do not anticipate any increase in the overall budget for salaries, but anticipate requests for transfers for different positions with different responsibilities. I hope to have this compiled to present to you for ordinance changes for the next City Council meeting. Marlboro Public Schools. Headed into his third year with the Marlboro Public Schools, Superintendent Michael Bergeron continues to provide steady leadership and guidance to both Marlboro Public School employees and students, as well as a reliable partner to city administration. Superintendent Bergeron, the Marlboro School Committee, and the School Building Committee were instrumental in ensuring that our new elementary school opened on time and under budget. Both goals have been achieved, and we have temporary occupancy and have taken physical control of the building. We still have plenty to do on the grounds outside of the school, but the building looks great, and we plan to hold tours soon. The school is set to open in September. My colleagues on the school committee approved an operating budget increase for Marlboro Public Schools of 5.97%, totaling $67,327,844 for the coming fiscal year. This was done prior to the current financial concerns. Since receiving the budget, I have communicated to the superintendent that a reduction is needed, and subsequently, more reductions may need to follow. This is still much higher than usual, with most of the increase relative to costs associated with opening and operating a new elementary school. Additionally, there are increases in the school budget due to collective bargaining agreements, critical needs, and increases in student enrollment. We continue to educate our students through virtual learning and have been expanding these opportunities for learning on a regular basis. Capital Improvement Plan. Once we have a clear revenue projections, I intend to send down a capital improvement plan, but it will not be as large as in previous years due to the impacts of COVID-19. I have included only $300,000 in this budget for capital projects for any essential needs prior to a larger capital request. An additional budget highlights. As of April 1st, 2020, the Department of Public Works has taken over the entire operation, ending a 20-year contract with We Care, and will be handling all the city's municipal solid waste, recycling, and sludge operations. This will be a multi-year transition, and contracts have been put in place to continue these services. I look forward to working with you and answering any questions you may have on this proposal. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Arthur G. Vigent, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the mayor and his staff. These are certainly challenging times, and certainly based on my meetings with the mayor and the Superintendent Bergeron, Director Diaz, the budget is fiscally responsible to address the opening of the new elementary school, and this certainly provides the residents with services that they certainly expect in the wonderful city of Marlboro. Certainly, the fiscal challenges and work that the council has done in the past has positioned the city to fiscally absorb the impact of the COVID-19 virus while this minimizes the impact to the taxpayers. We're talking about a 2.93% increase. Looking at other communities, I think certainly this is going to be extremely difficult for our surrounding communities, you know, at this challenging time. My motion would be to approve the FY 2021 budget in the sum of $1,073,983,364.
Motion's made and seconded. Just to clarify, that's $173,983,301. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Roby.
Mr. President, thank you. While I also congratulate the mayor on the work that he has done, I personally am not ready to vote on this budget this evening. I know it's hard, and typically, this budget would be referred to the Finance Committee. There would be discussion, and we would have a public hearing. And I know that you are pretty adamant that there will not be a public hearing. If we vote on this tonight, we deny the public the right to ask for a public hearing, which they can by mass general law. We also then put the city in a position of not being sure of, as the mayor said, the governor's projections for 15% shortfall for next year are, in my opinion, pretty realistic. I don't see the need to rush on this. We have 45 days. We have until June 8th until we actually have to vote. I will not make a motion at this point in case there are other councilors who wish to speak, but at this point, I'm not ready to vote.
Counselor Orem.
Thank you. I don't know how to signify if I want to talk, so I put my hand up. Is that okay, Mr. President?
That works fine.
Okay. Some of them have raised-hand functions. I don't know if this Teams does. I concur with Counsel Roby, as well as I have many concerns about the future in respect to the funding that we're getting, not just from the state, but from hotel taxes. Obviously, through all this presently, we are seeing a major change. Unfortunately, we're saving lives, but with the circumstances in saving lives, we are also economically seeing a major change. So with that, I believe, as Counsel Roby has stated, we need to go through the process. We need to maybe look at two, maybe three different budgets for different scenarios. It's unfortunate we don't have a steadfast report on the final numbers that we can expect, but I think 15% is at least an estimate of potential in changes in the type of funding we get, both from the state, and we have to figure all the lost business to our hotels and all the businesses that provide our taxes. So with that said, and more importantly, having a public hearing, I think it's always appropriate to have a public hearing, especially on a large budget as we are looking at. So I cannot vote for the budget tonight and would ask that we set up Finance Committee meetings and have a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem.
President Osing.
Who's speaking?
I'm sorry. It's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much. I concur with Councilors Roby and Orem. It is an extensive budget. As what was said, we're not sure exactly what the numbers are going to be like for the next year. I'm not sure how to play the scenarios out, to be honest, is what Counsel Orem was talking about, but I think that, you know, having it go through the Finance Committee and if we can, you know, if things start opening up within a reasonable timeframe, within the window that we're required to respond, we can have a public hearing. So I think it's too early to run it through, and I would rather have this go through a Finance Committee meeting and see what happens from there.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. If I could ask Counsel Roby to assume the chair position so I can speak on the budget?
This is Counsel Roby. I will assume the chair position.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. So, councilors, you know, a couple of things. If you really think the state is going to be in a position to tell you how much financial revenue the city's going to receive, and even if it's the 15 million or 15%, that equates a little over $5 million reduction. I want to tell you, our rainy day fund has $16 million in it. Overlay has over four. Free cash has over six. The city, in the years that I've been on this council, we have positioned ourselves for just this time. All the rainy day fund and the work this council has done in the past has positioned the city so we can absorb whatever the mayor, not the mayor, whatever the state comes down for revenue. But you've got to ask yourself, you've had the budget for 10 days. The budget, $4.9 million increase, we haven't seen an increase this small since fiscal year 15. The tax rate on this budget, it's projected, is less than last year. The impact to the average house in our philosophy of steady, stable, predictable tax adjustments is less than what we had last year. All right? So we're in a position that's unique, that we can act on a budget to allow the department heads to move on, to address needs, to make sure we can survive adequately with this year's budget and not have to be worried about whether or not we can finalize this budget. I mean, if you honestly think you're going to reduce something, because that's all we can do, we cannot add to it. If you think you're going to reduce a dollar amount in this budget, then by all means, bring it up, and I'm sure, I haven't been shy about having to reduce something. But let's look at what we're doing. A less than 3% increase in the budget. We're able to maintain the services that the residents expect at a tax rate that's lower than anyone in the surrounding towns. I mean, that is phenomenal work on your part, on our department parts, and on the city as a whole. I mean, that is pretty darn impressive. All right? So there's no, if you really think we're going to cut something, great. So now the topic of public hearings. Well, public hearings, if you read mass general law, it says may have a public hearing. So we've had public hearings. Well, let me just remind you of the last four public hearings. No one spoke last year. No one spoke two years ago. We had one question three years ago, and we had one individual speak against the budget four years ago. So I understand the excitement about a public hearing, but ask yourself, what is really going to be accomplished by it, other than to say you had one? All right? They have entrusted us to make sure we put out a budget that delivers the services the residents expect at a tax that's, you know, I hate to use the word reasonable, because reasonable to everyone's a little different, but as I can say, it's less than any of the surrounding towns, and we provide more services. There's no bus fees, there's no athletic fees, we pick up trash. I mean, there's a lot that we have going for us. And then I get back to, should some of the revenues fall short? And they may. You know? We built up a rainy day fund. Well, you may call this a monsoon right now, but we have the cash reserves to adequately support and make sure our budget is okay. You heard the mayor in his opening letter. He's probably going to have a spending freeze. He's probably going to have a hiring freeze. You know? We'll see how that all unfolds. But having something on the books now puts this city in a position, I mean, I think it would be the envy of the rest of the Commonwealth that we have a budget set and that we have the capability to absorb any challenges that may come up. I mean, and that's really an accomplishment to all of you over the years who have worked hard to put this city in this type of financial condition. So there really is no reason, unless you want to reduce the budget, we're just going to go through an exercise of hearing and talking about it, and, you know, the record stands as it is. So I wholly endorse the Finance Chair's recommendation to improve this budget tonight, and I hope the other councilors do as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there any other councilors who wish to speak?
Counsel, Counsel Landers would like to say a few words.
Counsel Landers.
Quite honestly, I admire what the mayor and his work has did. I think they did a tremendous job putting this budget together. Likewise, the school department, what they're going through adding a new school. I feel strongly that I will not vote for this tonight, but I will vote for it on the 4th or certainly by the 18th. Now, why do I say that? I think I just want to give the people out there, the residents of Marlboro, at least a week, if they have any questions, that they can contact the mayor's office, they can contact the president, they can contact the school department. So I think by putting it off for a week, no, I don't think a public hearing is necessary per se. I don't think Finance Committee meetings are necessary. I spent a lot of time going through this budget, and you look at some of the increases. Some of it is the cost of living rates. Some of it is, you know, the new school. So you look at the few increases there are, and the fact that it only went up, I think, what, 2.93%. So I don't think we need those finance meetings. I don't think you could spend all night on it, and I'm not sure if you could, you know, cut $1,000. The only reason I'd like to put it off for a week, as I mentioned, just to give the residents of Marlboro, if they have any concerns or have any questions. But quite honestly, and I say this as the chairman of the finance, I would make the motion on the 4th of 18th that we pass the budget as submitted. That's all I have to say right now.
I would like to speak. Counsel.
Counsel Roby, I'll take back over the chair at this point. Thank you very much. Counsel Wagner.
I appreciate, thank you. Thank you. So I appreciate what's being said. The uncertainty, there isn't, we have a lot of uncertainty ahead of us within the next year, so there's not going to be anything that changes in a week or in even a month. I think this is a very modest increase. I think it addresses the needs of the city, and I'm amazed that we were able to put together a budget that does that. We made the point that we can only reduce, there isn't anything, this is not a time to be reducing people's budget. My concern about waiting, so two things. One, this is a public meeting, so it's been on the website. It's, you know, again, it's a very modest increase. If somebody, I think if people had a chance to come forward if they wanted to. I'm also really concerned about our department heads and the incredible amount of work and the stress that they're all under right now, and that I think it would be in our best interest to get this done because we still have to go, the mayor's got to look at the capital plan. We have a lot of big projects ahead of us. This is a time we need some certainty. And again, this is not, there isn't anything really controversial in this. It's a modest increase. We could get this done tonight, get to work on the capital plan, and allow our department heads to focus on their work and not be pulled into budget conversations. So I don't see what would be gained by delaying this vote, honestly, you know, one more week or even a couple more weeks, and then I think we should make a decision tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Wagner. Are there any other councilors that wish to be heard?
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support Counsel Irish's motion, and I hope we can all vote on this tonight and get it moving so we can move forward. It's a lean budget. All the department heads did a great job, and let's just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Tenera. Are there any other councilors that wish to be heard?
Counsel Dumas would like to speak.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually did have a question for department head. I reached out to them. They responded back to me today. It was a great conversation. You did your due diligence. You'll see that there was a lot of contractual obligations, which has a huge percentage of the increase, so which means that we cannot even decrease those line items because we're based on contracts, so we have no say in that moving forward. I'm set to approve this tonight. Like, everyone was saying, it is a very small increase. It's lower than last year, even with the new school being built. Let's just approve it so the department heads can sleep well tonight with everything else going on. I know that they're pretty concerned about this budget and just want to get... I know that they're pretty concerned about this budget and just want to get it over with. There's no point to delay it even 45 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dumas. Are there any other councillors that wish to be heard?
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to express my support for what councillors Robie, Landers, Orem, and Ducep brought up earlier. I think even if we wait a week and, you know, we don't have anyone who comments, I think we at least gave them the opportunity. And I know that this is the first remote meeting that we've had since a lot of things were happening around the coronavirus, and so I think it's our due diligence to give that space and time for people to reach out. And then I feel it would be in good faith to move forward on approving the budget. Really impressed with all the hard work of our department heads and the mayor's office and the city council, and would echo Counsel Dumas's remarks, that many of the department heads have been extremely responsive and we're so grateful for that. And I would like to give the public more opportunity to look through the budget, given that it is very extensive, even if the increase is minor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Are there any other councillors that wish to be heard?
Mr. President, if I'm not hearing any, if I may speak again?
Counselor Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that, I understand where you're coming from, I agree with all your points. We as a city have done a tremendous job in making sure that we do have stabilization and we do have money to use. We have done it conservatively, and I think that we need to be careful and understand that we use that only if we need to. So if we don't need to, and I'm not sure, we may need to regardless of what we do, because nobody's going to be able to know by the time we vote on this, even if we hold out till June 8th. My guess is the state's not going to have their budget done, so we won't know what we're really getting in funds. And I know the mayor did use 95% of the governor's money for our cherry sheet. We do have lots of free cash, and my understanding that the mayor may put a freeze on is good here, but the mayor's freezing means he gets to decide who gets hired and who doesn't get hired. I'm not ready to make a reduction yet, but I really do wonder if reducing the budget and then if we know that it's there and coming in in the future, we can always do a supplemental budget. It's only April, this budget will not take place until July 1st. So does it matter to a budget head, a department head, if their budget is approved tonight or was approved on June 8th or some date in between? I don't think so. They're more worried about their budget today and making sure that they can meet the needs that they have. So I'm not sure what the support is. I know there is a motion to approve. I not really feel like we need to have a public hearing set up, I don't even know that it needs to go to committee. My motion would be to postpone until the May 18th.
So there's a motion to approve on the table and a motion to postpone to May 18th? Counselor Robie?
Correct.
This is Counselor Pearlman, I second Counselor Robie's motion.
So the motion has been made and seconded. All right, so I'm going to take them up in the order that they were presented.
Mr. President?
Who's speaking?
Sorry, this is Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin.
Sorry, I was trying to speak a little bit earlier, and there were some technical difficulties on my side, so I apologize for that and for letting you kind of sit out there as you were waiting for, I think it was the last councillor to raise their hand. You know, I just, I want to echo, you know, the thoughts and concerns of just about everybody. I understand that this is an incredibly difficult time, and to pick up a budget like this and approve it very quickly, you know, is cause for concern. That said, we are in a time that is of great concern, and I understand that our department heads have worked very hard on this budget, as has the mayor, and, you know, they have worked to put this together, and their minds appropriately need to be elsewhere, need to be taking care of the people of this community. This is a small increase, as just about everyone has said, it is a responsible increase. I certainly wish, as I'm sure, you know, my 10 colleagues do, that this is, this is, would be a much larger increase, and that there could be some other things, and hopefully we will get to that at some point, you know, and hopefully we will see times return to normal and times get better soon, so that we can continue to improve our city as best as possible. That said, I second the thoughts of many of our fellow councillors tonight, who want our department heads to be able to get moving forward and put this to bed. I am willing to support that this evening, especially considering the fact that any public hearing would be very challenging at this time, to be able to execute quickly and to execute safely. So that said, I do, I do support moving forward on this this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Navin. So with the two orders, I'll take the first one up. So the first order is an order to approve the budget as submitted, $173,983,324. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. If you vote yes, you vote in favor of approving the fiscal year 21 budget. Mr. Clerk. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes no.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes no for this date.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes no.
Counselor Aussing. Counselor Aussing votes yes. Counselor Ducep.
Counselor Ducep votes no for this date.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie votes no.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Six in favor, five opposed, sir. The vote is six in favor, five opposed. The fiscal year 21 budget of $173,983,364 is approved. I'll ask for a two-minute recess. City council is back from recess. Counselor Orem, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad the city solicitors with us at this point. On the budget, I'm not for sure myself, because usually we have more than the supermajority of eight votes. Does a simple majority approve the budget?
Yes, Counselor Orem, it does. It's an appropriation. Solicitors on would like to weigh in?
Sorry, I was muted. I missed the question.
No, not you, Diane, oh, Diane, Diane, what? The question is, is a simple six vote, I mean, from my 20 years of experience on the council, the answer is yes, it's six votes to approve the budget. But if the council, the auditor wants to confirm that?
Yes, it is six votes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor Orem. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $775,000, which moves funds from undesignated fund to overtime snow and ice, snow removal and operating expenses in the amounts of $182,000, $173,000, and $420,000 respectively, to fund the fiscal year 2020 deficit.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, the city is obligated to fund this deficit, and, you know, going, it was considered a light winter. My motion is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer for the snow and ice budget of 700 and...
$75,000.
I need my glasses. $775,000. So motion made and seconded to approve the transfer to zero out our snow and ice deficit for the year, and that will come from the free cash. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Ducep.
Counselor Ducep votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Aussing. Counselor Aussing votes yes. Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
And Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. The vote to approve the transfer of $775,000 for the snow and ice deficit for fiscal year 20 is approved, 11 in favor, none opposed. It is a vote. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $188,711, which moves funds from reserved for salaries to various accounts to fund the recently ratified MMEA collective bargaining agreement for fiscal years 2019 to 2021.
Counselor Irish.
Mr. President, thank you. This contract in terms is very consistent with the, with other city contracts regarding wages and adjustments. I think the mayor did a great job getting this contract completed. Motion is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract for the MMEA for fiscal years 19, 20, and 21. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, this is Counselor Robie. I believe the motion would be to approve the transfer. We don't approve the contract.
You are, you are correct, Counselor Robie. Thank you very much. The motion to, I got to keep putting my glasses on, I got, motion to approve the transfer of $188,711 to fund the contract for MMEA for fiscal years 19, 20, and 21. Thank you, Counselor Robie. That motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Aussing. Counselor Aussing votes yes. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie congratulates the mayor on the successful contract and votes yes on the transfer.
Counselor Ducep.
Counselor Ducep votes yes on the contract, on the...
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. The vote to approve the transfer to fund the MMEA contract is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $100,000, which moves funds from interest-on-ban to COVID-19 expense to cover unanticipated costs associated with the efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This certainly provides the city with funds to address the needs associated with responding to the COVID-19. My motion is to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the $100,000 transfer to set up a fund to cover expenses for the COVID-19. And just so the council is aware, this will make it easier, as the mayor indicated in his letter, for tracking purpose so that we can get reimbursed for these funds going forward. So on, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Orem.
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, at present, do we know what our costs are? Have we had any cost yet for accommodating anyone that needed to be isolated in our hotels?
If it be appropriate, I'd ask for a suspension of the rules to allow the mayor to answer that question.
Sure.
All right? I've asked the clerk.
I have one other question of the mayor.
Okay, well, let's, let's make sure we get everybody on board. So on the motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Aussing. Counselor Aussing votes yes. Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Ducep.
Counselor Ducep votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
And Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. The motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members. As far as expenses so far, we have spent money for some rooms. We have 10 reserved rooms down at the Best Western Hotel, they've been very accommodating to us. We keep them on reserve for, it's $35 a night, $35 a night they're charging us to reserve 10 rooms. Then if we activate the rooms, the rate doubles, if people actually utilizing them. We set those up for first responders, for hospital personnel, or other employees that we have that may need police officers, that maybe someone's sick at home and they don't want to take the chance, so we can put them down there so we don't lose any time with them. We've been very, very fortunate. We haven't had anyone test positive in the police department, only had a couple in the fire department, and I believe they're both back to work at this point. We've had three or four down at the DPW, no one in city hall. We've just been so fortunate with how everyone stayed pretty healthy. So I'm not sure, I think I told a couple of councillors today, whether we have good precautions in place or whether it's a luck of the draw, but we're pretty lucky. Other expenses, we've run some through, you're well aware of the grant money the state's put out to our health department, we received over $30,000 in grant money, we've been utilizing some of that to buy some PPE and some other supplies. We've run up some overtime costs that different departments are keeping track of, and again, we've been fortunate, we brought the nursing staff from the schools while they're out, we brought them to our health department down in city hall, so they've been a huge help down here. The fact that we have several of the nurses from the school system that are working down in the health department right now. So we haven't run up a lot of costs, we have run up some, but it was a recommendation that if we set a fund up, as we spend money, we could run it through that, keeps the auditor content with controlling some of the costs and also easier for our reimbursement.
And if I may, Mr. President, through you to the mayor?
Yes, Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for answering the first question, and you actually added some... something to the second question I had on grant funds. So, the city's received 30,000. Are we expecting any more grant funds from the state or from anyone else like Metro West Health Foundation?
We probably will be receiving more from the state, but at this time, nothing's in the pipeline as far as additional checks coming. I'm not aware of anything else. Obviously, the big reimbursement will come at the end with the FEMA reimbursement and the FEMA reimbursement.
And we exhaust, if we approve this tonight, is your plan to exhaust the grant funds before we spend this money here that we're looking at to add to the budget for COVID-19 expenses?
Oh, there's no question. We're gonna, we're gonna burn through those grants pretty quickly.
Okay, and the other question I had is related to the amount available balances. $957,400 in available balance from the ban. I guess the interest rate came in lower than the budgeted amount. So, was that $957,000 representing the interest that was to be spent or is it representing the ban?
No, that was the interest on the ban. When you have a ban in place, you're paying the interest only, I believe, for the first year. And then, if you continue the ban, you continue to pay the interest. But we set the short term up. We have to plan on a more liberal interest rate and obviously hope to come in under that, and we were successful in doing that.
And, Mr. President, I just have one more question on the ban. Mr. Mayor, what was the purpose for that ban? Was it multiple purposes or was it a single purpose?
Uh, there are, there were a few different things included in that one, but several of the debt service line items, you're gonna see surplus in this year. We're actually hoping to go out for a bond accumulating some of these bands, and we're hoping to go out for a bond before the end of the fiscal year. So, some of the things we have in there, we will be utilizing as far as our bonding costs and, and some payments on it. We've been delaying it. Actually, you had voted on consolidation a couple of months, about a month ago now, and at that time, bond market just fell out. So, weren't able to go out then, but we have an S and P call tomorrow to discuss the possibility of going out before the end of the fiscal year. We're planning on going out the last time. One community went out and got some very, very, very high rates in the tune of five to six percent. So, we decided that wasn't gonna work. And then, another community went out and had no bidders at all on their request. So, we rode it out a little bit. Things are a lot better right now, and we're hoping we can get that bond in place before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Oram. Is there any other discussion on the, on the transfer request?
This is Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was curious, and this could be for the mayor or anyone, if at a future city council meeting, we would receive an update about how much of that transfer amount through the COVID-19 expense had been utilized?
I, you'll be getting a complete report on that.
Okay, thank you. And is there any other distinctions around the COVID-19 funds, what it will not be used for? I know you list some of the things like PPE and the hotel accommodations, but this is considered to be for city staff? Or can you clarify the purpose of the funds?
Yeah, there'll be overtime costs and, and other costs for personnel that, whether from bringing someone in or used for emergency purposes, but those will be controlled more through the payroll departments. And when we send in the application for the grant to FEMA, once this is all completed, it's pretty intensive. We're very fortunate. Fred Flynn's done them in the past, working with Ted Scott down at the DPW. When an emergency's put in place, it was something that Don Q, Don Qusom was great at bringing us in money on a regular basis for every emergency that came up. And Ted and, and Fred are both doing, doing a remarkable job, and I'm sure that that reimbursement will include a lot of things, anything having to do with the costs. We have a lot of school costs with a lot of the food program, the seniors with their food programs down there. So, they've all been keeping track of it. We've sent out several emails to remind department heads to keep track of all additional costs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really appreciate that and know that putting this money in upfront will be very helpful as we anticipate many more costs. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Is there any other discussion on the transfer? So, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the $100,000 transfer. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Doucette.
Counselor Doucette votes yes.
And Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to approve the transfer of $100,000 for a COVID-19 fund is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding a proposed job title and description change relative to the conservation slash sustainability officer position.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I reached out to Priscilla just to confirm the fact that this job description was created in 1989, and she confirmed that. So, I move to approve this tonight, just so, it's pretty well done and documented, and I like the sustainability upgrades that she did with this. I think she did a great job with her and the mayor, and I move to approve this tonight.
President Aussing, I'd like to speak. Counselor Doucette.
Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, President Aussing. Great kudos to both the mayor and also Priscilla Ryder on working on this. She has done outstanding work, and I think changing the direction of how the city addresses climate resiliency and climate change really works towards the change in the role and responsibility of her job. So, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Who's speaking?
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you. On the comment that the clerk made, that this is a ordinance change, is it really an ordinance change? It's a job description, which is part of the HR department's work, not anything part of the code itself. So, can't we approve this tonight?
I, yeah, is this, the city clerk, and I just, I believe that is correct, and if not, we will be, we'll, Karen's will light up and I'm sure we'll get our, but yes, no, it's just a job description from HR, and we should be able to just approve this tonight. So, on the motion has been made and seconded to approve the job description change and title change for the conservation officer. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, if I may, then also comment on agreeing with the comments that have been made by others, that the job description is certainly well-needed, and I totally agree with the, the change and support, supporting Priscilla Ryder and all the work that she does for the city.
Very well said, Counselor Roby and Counselor Doucette. So, that, well done. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Doucette.
Counselor Doucette votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to approve the job description title change for the conservation agent is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Item nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding notification of renewal of 60-day appointments of collector Eileen Bristol as interim treasurer, effective April 14, 2020 at 5:00 p.m., and Steven Cirillo as interim comptroller, effective April 23, 2020 at 5:00 p.m.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept and place on file.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication on the temporary appointments, or 60-day appointments from the mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Doucette.
Counselor Doucette votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Communication from the mayor regarding the two 60-day appointments is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield on behalf of President Aussing regarding the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 to add a new Section 38 relative to creating a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district.
Counselor Roby.
Mr. President, I move to refer this item to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, set a public hearing for June 8, and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, public hearing for June 8, and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Counselor Aussing, Counselor Doucette would like to speak.
Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, President Aussing. Again, this is wonderful news for trying to get the city to be greener and moving in the right direction as far as becoming more climate resilient and being more energy independent as far as municipality goes. And I look forward to moving forward on this and possibly other different approaches that could be going forward.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. I will, the, the seed for this came from your work two years ago, so I want to thank you for that. And then, it also came from Counselor Oram for his comments when we approved the funding of the landfill, of the monies for the landfill. So, to Counselors Oram and Doucette, I'll describe more when we have the public hearing, but thank you to both of you. So, on the motion, or any other discussion first?
Mr. President?
Counselor Oram.
First, thank you for that notice. I appreciate it. And secondly, I know it designates the area of the landfill. Are there any other areas that we'll be looking at in the future for the city of Marlboro? I believe, maybe a year or two ago, there was some discussion towards the Framingham, South Rose side of Marlboro, possibly for solar.
So, I don't know that, but that, I mean, this, this, this is a start, and I'm happy to, well, I guess, Counselor Roby, would you mind taking the chair for a moment?
Thank you. I'm sorry to put you on that spot.
This is Counselor Roby. I'll take over chair. Counselor Aussing, would you like to speak?
I would. Thank you, Madam President. So, so Counselor Oram, this came about through colonial power. There's some unique incentives to build solar, solar facilities on landfills that allows the city to get a significant amount of money and allows low residential, low-income residential customers to get two cents off their electricity. So, this sound, it just sounded like a real good idea. The more I've been working on it, I've done some research, and I'll, I'll share that with you, not tonight, but there's solar landfills being spread out all around the Commonwealth. It's the SMART program that Governor Baker's been really, and the legislation's been high on, and there's incentives, as Counsel Navin will tell you, the sooner you get in, the better the, the incentives you get. I'm pretty excited about it, but to your comment, are there other places? Sure. I mean, there, I mean, if you can find the, the space, they're, they're willing to even build them on the parking garage. But remember, the parking garage, we can do on our own. If we're gonna, the solar facilities are not recognized in our zoning ordinance, so we have to have a zoning ordinance. And you, and the way Counsel Doucette and Assistant Solicitor Pantagor set up the zoning ordinance, it's really pretty straightforward, and it's just the back part where you add what parcels you want to include as solar facilities. So, if it's, you know, you pick the, you know, obviously, the solar facilities want a large parcel, so there aren't a whole lot of large parcels hanging around. There are some, South Street, maybe the folks on South Street want to sell, not the farm, but the, the folks that own the parcel that we've had discussions with over the year want to sell that. There's all sorts of opportunities, but, you know, do I know that answer now? No. This one happened to come, and I says, oh, this sounds really good. Let's try it. And if there's an appetite for the council, as the council knows, some folks wanted a playground, a recreational area on that landfill, you know, do we want to carve part of it out? All that can be discussed, but that's kind of the background of why I got here. Long story, or long answer to a question.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Counselor Doucette as well.
Is there anyone else who would like to discuss?
Hi, this is Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to also express my extreme delight to see that this is moving forward and going to Urban Affairs. I think it's a good use for the landfill area, and excited that the city is taking this on, and it's really great that will also help our taxpayers and be beneficial to all parties. So, looking forward to that moving through the council into committee. Thank you.
Counselor Roby, I'll take back the chair, if that's okay?
I was just gonna unmute and ask you if you were gonna take it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Is there any other discussion on the motion? And the motion, just to remind everyone, is to ascend to Urban, to Planning, public hearing June 8, and advertise. Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the roll, or call the roll.
Counselor Doucette. Counselor Doucette. Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
And Counselor Doucette.
Counselor Doucette votes yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Eleven yeas.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Doucette. The motion to refer to Urban, Planning, the Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, public hearing on June 8, and to advertise is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 11.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed salary ordinance amendment relative to Chapter 125, Section 6, which removes and adds salary rates from the schedule and establishes rates by order, not ordinance, in proper legal form, Order Number 20-107929A.
Mr. President.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept, you don't want to move, well, you want to move it to 24, or you want to just accept and place on file? Well, motion to accept and place, hang on, motion to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes no.
And Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Ten yeas, one nays, sir. The motion to accept and place on file is approved. Ten in favor, one opposed. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding a letter of support for proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Sections 5, 17, and 18, relative to contracted yards and the proposed rezoning of land located on Farm Road identified as Map 85, Parcel 12, Order Number 20-107947.
Mr. President, Counsel Roby is here.
Counsel Roby.
Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the ZBAs. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
And Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to accept the ZBA correspondence is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 13.
Communication from Attorney Mark Borbeau on behalf of Marlboro Hub LLC regarding proposed rezoning of land off Valley Street identified as Map 82, Parcel 125.
Mr. President, Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
I move to refer this to Urban Affairs, to the Planning Board, set a public hearing for June 22nd, and to advertise.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, public hearing for June 22nd, and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to refer to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, set a public hearing for June 22nd, and to advertise is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 14.
An application for renewal of junk dealer secondhand dealer license by Roman Kim Yargaroff, DBA Arthur &amp; Sons Shoe Repair at 107 Main Street.
Mr. President, Counsel Landis.
Counselor Landers.
Mr. President, I would like to make the motion that we approve the renewed license tonight on this particular applicant, also applicant in number, item 15 and 16. Basically, these are the three applicants that we've interviewed over the last few years. Chief Georgie has done recent queries on them. In fact, we got all the reports either last Friday or today. So that being the case, Mr. President, I'd like to group 14, 15, and 16, of course, have the clerk read each item and vote, make one vote that we approve these tonight.
Mr. President.
Counselor Orem.
Just curious, and Counselor Dumas, you can have your input on this. Do we want to do, say, 14 and 15 first, and then 16 by itself?
Yeah, we want to separate that, yes.
That would be appropriate, so we keep Counselor Dumas not in any hot water with...
14 and 15, 14 and 15.
So on the motion, the motion's been made and seconded to approve 14, which is a junk dealer license for Arthur &amp; Son, and item 15 is a junk dealer license for Hainouche Jewelers at 601 Donalange Boulevard. So the motion's been made and seconded to approve. The query checks have been submitted to the police department, and they have reviewed and found them acceptable. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve those two junk dealer licenses? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for both items 14 and 15. Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes, and my apologies for making things difficult.
Counselor Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Dumas, you're not making it difficult, you're doing the right thing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
And Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. On the motion to approve the junk dealer license for items 14 and 15, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 16, Counselor Dumas.
I will be recusing myself from this vote. Thank you, guys.
Please let the record reflect that Counselor Dumas will be recused from participating in Agenda Item 16.
An application for renewal of a junk dealer secondhand dealer license for Gerald Dumas, DBA Dumas &amp; Sons Secondhand Store, 65 Mechanic Street.
Counselor Landers.
Mr. President, Counsel Landis, I make the motion that we approve item 16, the junk dealer's license for Jerry Dumas, 65 Mechanic Street.
Motion made and seconded to approve the junk dealer license for Dumas &amp; Son, and again, the police chief has received the query checks, and that all worked out fine for the police department. So, motion's been made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dumas is abstaining. Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. The motion to approve the junk dealer license for Dumas &amp; Son is approved. Ten in favor, none opposed, one abstained. Agenda item 17.
Petition from EverSource Energy to install 30 feet of 2-inch IP plastic gas main as a system improvement on Jefferson Street from the current end of the gas main at 23 Jefferson Street to 27 Jefferson.
Counselor Landers.
Okay, Mr. President. What I'd like to do with items 16 and 17, likewise, combine these two, they're both with EverSource. And what I'd really like to do, Mr. President, is to schedule a public hearing, ideally on May 18th. And also, I guess what I'd probably do is refer this to the city engineer, Tom DePersio, and get moving on both of these projects. So if we could, you know, combine like we did the previous three, and get moving on this on one vote, and see if we can get these projects underway.
So motion made and seconded to refer both items to engineering, and have a public hearing for both items on May 18th, and to advertise.
That's correct.
President Osing, point of order?
Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, President Osing. Would it also be referred to public service as well?
I believe, well, I believe the intent of the public service chair is to not have to have him go to public service based on an engineer's report. If the engineer's report comes back with some challenges at the public hearing, he would then make the motion to refer to public service. But if it's not, if there are no issues from engineering, and the public hearing is uneventful, he would be asking for a vote that night after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
You're correct on that, Mr. President. That would be the direction we'd like to go. The city engineer does do a good job. He puts, you know, any conditions that we might be concerned about, or the neighbors might be concerned about. So we do depend a lot on the engineering department, particularly Tom. So that's exactly what I'd like to do. And perhaps, after the public hearing on the 18th, and everything goes well, I might ask for a suspension and vote on it that night. So that would be my plan, Mr. President.
Okay, so, there's a motion for Agenda Items 17 and 18 to refer them both to engineering, and to have a public hearing on May 18th for each one. Obviously, the public hearings will be held separately. On that motion, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
And Counselor Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve Agenda Items 17 and 18 by referring to engineering and holding a public hearing for each one on May 18th is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 19.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of VD Naturals LLC regarding a request to extend time limitations to July 21st, 2020 at 10:00 p.m. on the application for a special permit to operate an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 505 Boston Post Road West. In addition to supplemental documents related to the special permit application, Order Number 1920-107881B.
Mr. President, Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
It is my hope that we will be able to meet back in the council well before July 1st to continue with a committee meeting. If not, I think there's a plan for us to practice having an online committee meeting. Until that time, I move to extend the time for this item to July 21st, 2020 at 10:00 p.m.
Motion made and seconded to extend the time limit for the special permit to July 21st, 2020 at 10:00 p.m. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset. Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
And Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the time extension for the special permit to July 21st at 10:00 p.m. is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 20.
Application for a minor modification of an LED sign special permit from Aube Engineering on behalf of Noria Energy, the Shell Station at 413 Lakeside Ave, excuse me, to add electronic diesel price panel to an existing electronic message board gas pricing sign.
Mr. President, Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you. The counselors have in their packet all the information that shows what the petitioner would like to do. They have an existing sign with an existing permit. They are simply removing a panel that is not LED and replacing it with one that would show their diesel pricing. Unless there is an objection from any of the counselors, I would move to approve this tonight.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minor change to the sign permit at 413 Lakeside Ave. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
And Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the minor sign change to the special permit for 413 Lakeside Ave is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Item 21.
Notice of filing and canceled public hearing and extension of deadline for written comments to the Department of Public Utilities for N-Star Gas Company, DBA EverSource Energy with the DPU number of 19-120.
Mr. President, Mr. Tenera.
Accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the correspondence. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Osing. Counselor Osing votes yes. Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
And Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to accept the correspondence is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 22.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
President Osing, it's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Yes, I'd like to accept item 22 on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
And Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Claims.
Counselor, President Aussing, it's Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset.
Yes, I refer to item twenty-three, the claims sent to legal.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Excuse me, Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
And Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to refer the claims to legal department is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Reports of committees, do any of the committee chairs have any reports they want to make? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number twenty-four.
Order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine two nine, proposed salary ordinance amendment submitted by the mayor relative to chapter one twenty-five, section six of the city code. The recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the proposed salary ordinance referred to the city solicitor for proper legal form and to advertise.
Mr. President.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to mention, we, the council should have received an email around four fourteen p.m. this afternoon in regards to this agenda item. My motion would be to amend the current language and add the language that was proposed from Counselor Roby's email in regards to the salary ordinance.
So the motion has been made to amend the language that was in the solicitor's communication to then make the entire item an ordinance and not an order. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it was, that is correct, Mr. President, from the redlined email from Counselor Roby. So to replace that language, that is correct.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to amend the ordinance, which would then need to be advertised, right?
Yes, sir.
That is correct, Mr. President.
So discuss, so again, so the councils are following, so Counselor Roby submitted some amended changes to the salary ordinance slash order, so that it now reads as one salary ordinance. If the councils approve the amended language, it would then be appropriate to advertise the amended salary ordinance. Everyone following?
Everyone's following. Counselor Roby, if I may speak, I don't, you haven't asked for discussion, but...
It's common, but yes, so discussion. Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Irish, for making the motion. I wasn't sure exactly how this would proceed. Everyone received the document from the solicitor, and as it states on our agenda, the actual document that he had and the two documents that he, or the letter and the two documents, does do by ordinance one thing and then does by order the salary piece, which has never been done by the city council in the past, in my understanding by Master General Law, salary ordinances should be done by ordinance. So what I tried to do was to combine the two documents, and I know that Counselor Irish's motion was to amend. I would also move to just accept and place on file item agenda eleven three, which was the order that I combined, so that the two documents actually have something done with them. One is amended, one is a simple accept and place on file. So I, I would hope that everybody agrees to amend this, so that the, what is advertised is one ordinance that does add the new position and then deletes what currently exists and then adds in the new information that the mayor is requesting. Thank you.
So agenda item eleven has already been, which was the solicitor's response, has already been accepted and placed on file. So now it's taking what the finance committee's recommended and cleaned up or amended to what Counselor Roby has submitted. So what you will be voting on, counselors, is Counselor Roby's amended ordinance, and then to approve that and to advertise that, because we can't vote on it yet, so we'd have to sit on the table. It won't make it for May fourth, it would have to stay on the table or postpone till May eighteenth after it's been properly advertised. Then it would be before us for a vote. So, if everybody's still following, it's getting late, but hopefully you're still with me, the motion is to approve the amended language for the ordinance and to advertise and postpone the final vote, well, we can't vote until May eighteenth. So that would be the time we would appear back on the agenda on May eighteenth. So the motion is, if I heard Counselor Roby and Counselor Irish correctly, is to amend the ordinance and to advertise. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr.
I'll go, Counselor Oram first.
Okay, thank you. It's hard, it's hard on these platforms to not interrupt. I apologize, Counselor Irish. My main reason for not accepting and placing on file was so, on the other previous agenda item related to this, is so we could get to this item, and I am totally in agreement with keeping this as an ordinance, a salary ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Oram and Counselor Roby. So if I, if I hear this correct, the motion is to advertise the salary ordinance as amended.
That is correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, for the clarification.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, again, not seeing or hearing anybody else, I guess I'll go back. The motion that was made by Counselor Irish, and I guess in the past, the whole item has been moved to where it is on the agenda, and then after it's now at item number twenty-four, there would be a motion to accept the communication. So along with the communication from the solicitor were two documents. Those are the two documents that I think are related to number twenty-four. I'm amending one of them. The other one, I think we still need to accept and place on file. So my amendment would be to document eleven dash two, which you all have, so that would be to, as was already made, to approve the amendment and advertise, and then once that's done as a separate vote, to accept and place on file three, which was the order.
All right, you'll ask me now, but, huh? So, I mean, I just, I mean, there's only one order number, correct?
Correct, sir.
There's only one order number, so there's only one thing we can amend. Correct, Counselor Roby?
Well, I guess there's only one order number, but as you and I discussed, there are two documents attached to the solicitor's letter. So I think the solicitor's letter was both items can be voted upon at the same meeting. So one would expect to be voting on two things, one an ordinance change and one an order. We're not voting on the order because I want the order to become part of the ordinance change.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to start. So if I, so then your motion is to accept and place on file the order, correct?
Correct.
All right, on the motion to accept and place on file the order, is there any discussion on the motion? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
And Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the order is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. On the second motion, which is to approve the amended ordinance and to advertise, is there any discussion on that motion? And again, this will lay on the table pending advertising till May eighteenth. Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to approve the amended ordinance and advertise is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Counselors, this concludes this evening's agenda. I want to thank each and every one of you. You handled yourself extremely well during these unique circumstances, so I really do commend the effort you put in in reviewing the agenda, being prepared in the discussions that we had tonight. So I thank you all very much, and I do want to recognize Scott's out there somewhere in the ethernet keeping the camera working. I want to recognize Wilson, Mark Gibbs, and Steve Kerrigan. Nice job, guys, appreciate your help, and there's Mike back in the booth, tape and all this, so thank you very much. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, I'll ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
I want to echo President Aussing's statement, and Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
I was trying to get in before we had the vote. I just wanted to thank all our first responders and frontline workers, and I vote yes to adjourn.
Counselor Landers. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
And Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to adjourn carries eleven in favor and none opposed. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone, at nine forty-five.